...of the United States of America and to the Republic of Afghanistan, on a nation underground, individual, with no legal interest at all.
Where's Scott?
Yeah.
Sir, where's Dick?
I don't know.
Yeah, sure. Lovely, you. Okay, another one. Wally's not here, okay. One, two, I said. Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Public hearing on school speech in the Trinity Ave. Mr. Burrows is gonna address that because apparently there's a small, smart woman in there.
Well, we, the board wanted to have legislation adopted to address reduced speech in that area. We prepared the legislation in Senate, but there are, there is a caveat to that, and the vehicle traffic law has restrictions that if you can only do that within 300 feet of the boundary of the school. And so, I don't know the distances here, but I know that Wendy was aware of that too. So, that will play a role in what changes the value might make to the speed limit.
So, I'm, I've been working on that. I've contacted DOT, because I've measured without, from the entrance into the school on Trinity, down west, West Street, it is within the distance. I just gotta get clarification if it's from State Street to the school entrance plus that is considered a school zone, or if we can go from the entrance to West Street.
So, the DOT will control our actual distances. And unless they've done that, then you could have the legislation to reduce speeding out to that point and put it in.
So, my question becomes, do you want to phone a public hearing tonight?
I think, I think it would make good sense to do that until we know clearly from the DOT just how broad or how narrow it might be, because that, only then will the public have a phone for opportunity to, to voice their questions or concerns.
The public hearing did not get publicized because of those two, just maybe that changed.
Well, that makes it easier.
Yeah.
Perfect.
We didn't, we knew there was a conflict when I was waiting back there with the DOT, which I have not heard that from now.
Is Scott Fitzgerald from Solar Earth here?
I am, I'm here, sir.
The way back. It's your floor, sir.
Uh, I guess you guys have some questions regarding the program. Let's start that way, or would you like a quick overview of what we're here for and what we're trying to do again?
Uh, why don't you give us a quick overview first?
Okay. So, I'll give a quick overview for everybody. Roughly nine years ago, New York State passed their community solar program. It's run through the Nicetera Clean Energy Act. What it does is, obviously, you guys have national grid, do the line of demand national grid called the SBC charge, System Benefit Charge. This funds a lot of clean energy programs conducted through Nicetera, New York State. Because that line of demand is on your bill, the village actually could potentially qualify for the program. What this program means is that you are signing up for the clean energy program, and the developers take your meters and they place them onto one of their solar arrays, generating what they call offset dollars, and then placing them on your National Grid bill directly, reducing what you owe grid on a month-to-month basis. What that means is, this program is already funded. Whether you do the program or don't do the program, residential, commercial, or even municipalities, school districts, that type of stuff, you are funding this to happen. You are receiving the power in the lines, you are getting everything that's there. What it is essentially is the developers are mandated by the state to offset 80% of panels having allocated meters attached to those panels. In that, the developers wanna get their benefit out of the program, they need to have meters associated onto that solar array. In doing so, for you allowing them to use your meters, they give you a discount. Okay? It's not gonna raise the cost, because you're already funding it. I mean, so you've seen it already. It's not requiring the village to place any solar panels up to change any meters. This program is just another part of New York State's way to get the green energy in there.
One of the questions we have is, and Mr. Burrows elaborated on this because he's the one who reviewed this, it talks about the penalty for withdrawing, and it sounds pretty precarious.
Correct. So, what it is, meters of your size, obviously because you use a lot of consumption of power or high-demand meters, typically, these developers, when they create these agreements for something like that, they don't usually generate enough. With this agreement, it has 180-day out. What means, what that means is that it allows us, or you, to help offset your power along with the developers, meaning that the developers and us can take that power that you don't need anymore, meaning that, let's say you guys shut the whole entire village down, doesn't exist, you just, now it's just the town. What allows us to do is it take those dollar credits that you were receiving and give them to somebody else that's been sitting and waiting. Does that kinda make sense? So, yes, would there be a penalty? Correct, there could possibly be. But, given the way the program runs now, there is a waitlist that happens. Meaning that these developers, when these solar arrays are built, before they even are interconnected and get approval from the utility company, they have them already built. So, what it does is their partners come to us and they say, hey, we need to allocate X amount of power, kilowatt hours. And then what we do from there is they tell us what they're looking for directly on, you know, whether they're mush accounts, municipal, university schools, hospitals, whether they're basic residential, small, commercial, class, or what, they tell us. And then we make that happen for them. So, what we do is we present to the developers and say, hey, these guys are definitely interested in the program, can you generate an agreement for us? They generate the agreement, we provide everybody with the agreement, and then go from there. That's why what you're seeing in your agreement is, they give you 180-day out. What we do from there is we take it, and typically even a residential meter, it's a 90-day out. No penalties behind it, but it's a 90-day out, and there's a reason behind it.
So, the town of La Hoya is doing this?
Correct.
So, for the day that they signed to the data implementation, how long did that take?
It's gonna take some time. I'd have to find out which project they got allocated to. Generally, I tell people, it could potentially take around six months, and this is why. Like I said, they're filling, we're filling projects that are typically done, build-wise. But, what they do is, once these are built, the developers have to take what they call a letter of notice to the utility companies, an interconnect. And what happens from there is, the utility company has to okay it, meaning that they're gonna send their own crew out, because if you ever look at these solar arrays, the poles, the meters, the lines that tie into these things are owned by the utility company. So, the utility company's not just gonna say, yeah, go ahead and turn it right on, because that's a liability for them. So, what they come out to is they improve the interconnect by sending somebody out, one of their linesmen, and they do, you know, a full check of everything. That way, when I say they go live and they flip the switch, that power's driven directly in the line, out to the substations, and we all get it. It doesn't matter whether you sign for the program or not, you get it just like you get coal, nuclear, water, wind, solar, natural gas, it's all in the lines. We all get it, we pay for it.
So, so the towers are plowing?
Correct.
Where are they at the process? Can you tell us?
They have been approved by the developers. I'd have to find out what their interconnect date is for. So, they've been approved, they've been placed onto a solar array. Like I said, typically, I'd have to ask the office, the office would reach out to our partner, the partner would then feed that information back to us, and we give them a general idea. So, after, let's say, for example, let's say the interconnect date goes and starts up in, let's say, February or next year. What will typically happen is it'll be another 60 days before those credits are onto the utility. Because what'll happen from there is the developers will send a list over to National Grid in their case, letting them know that, hey, grid, on this solar array, the town of La Hoya has X amount of meters, here are their meter classifications, or meter account numbers. And then what'll happen is, National Grid will meter read those solar arrays, and then they'll place the dollar credits accordingly onto the bill.
So, you don't know what project we would be linked to?
No.
That hasn't completed yet.
Correct, because what's happening right now is, we're in that pre-approval status at this point in time. So, what they're doing right now is, we provided them with your National Grid information, for them to basically generate and say, hey, they're gonna look at their arrays, and they're gonna figure out which ones make sense. So, what they're doing is they're looking at your kilowatt hours, because that's how you're charged by National Grid, you're charged per kilowatt hours. That is where your power comes from, that is where your dollar cost comes from. And what they're doing is, they're looking at it and saying, alright, well, you guys do 1.5 megawatts of power, so 1,500,000 kilowatt hours. And they're saying, alright, this array over here, we are gonna place, maybe get your A, B, and C on, because what they're trying to do with these arrays is, they're trying to get them at that 80 to 90% cap. They wanna have basically, if they're producing a megawatt of power, 1 million kilowatt hours a month, they wanna make sure that they're, they've got meters on there that are gonna cover 900,000 kilowatt hours. So, they wanna know that the amount of power that they're generating off of there, they're offsetting that dollars to the correct people.
But, we don't know how much that project would actually generate.
We do, they have a general idea. We, I believe, and I have to look at through the agreements that we've kinda sent to you so far, they have already looked at your kilowatt hours, they've actually placed them on a previous page, the last page, the central page. So, they generally know what your hours are. They'll get more information from National Grid later on down the road, but right now, we haven't.
Do you have any towns or villages that have already been, not in a waiting process?
In this area?
Have.
Yeah, there's quite, actually, there's quite a few in the state. I'm trying to think about this area, because we haven't done much through here, but I know we've done a lot through the North Country, Ironic area. Trying to think of what makes sense around here. I know, BOCSIS does a lot of the towns and municipalities in the area, so usually your cities like Watertown, those type of places, your school districts, White House, those things are all running, regulated through BOCSIS. So, what BOCSIS has done is, they, they're like a middleman for, for the school district and so forth, third-party in a sense. They even have some solar arrays themselves on their property, and what they do is, the power they generate from there, they do the same thing that the community solar program does, they just do it on their own. So, what, it's kinda like, if you had solar at home on your roof and you didn't wanna take any of the power from that, the dollar credits that you could get off your bill, you could offset it onto somebody else's meter. You have the privilege of doing that, because technically, you're right, you own it. So, you could say, you can give it to your, you know, your son, daughter, or whatever else, cousin, family. They could generate the dollar credits on your behalf, because National Grid can take them anywhere.
Is there anybody that's dealt with your company?
In this area particularly?
Yes.
I apologize, I'm not from here, I'm in the Saratoga area. For example, over in the Saratoga area, everybody knows who the city of Saratoga Springs is, they do the program. We've actually worked with them directly, Saratoga County, Warren County actually has their own projects. I do a lot of stuff in my area, I just happen to be the one who, if somebody said, can you go do it? I was like, sure, come on, talk to you guys. So, this area, I have to actually look, I apologize for not being, you know, knowing. If I was, if I worked this area continuously, I would generally know, but since I don't, you know, I don't have an idea. I find out if I really need to, that's not a problem.
Mr. Burrows, do you have any?
Well, my, my hesitancy last month, I guess, simplistic level. I mean, I, first of all, there are six contracts that have been offered.
One for each, correct.
Yeah, so you got six contracts, nine more. And when I looked at it, and I recognized that all agreement is, is a meeting of the minds between you and the village. And, and my admitted concern was, was I did not understand the agreements, and because I couldn't understand them, I, I had hesitancy. For instance, I couldn't determine what the, the value of the credits was going to be that the village would receive, so I didn't know how good or bad it might be.
Yep.
These agreements are, are essentially perpetual in nature, that they're, they start off the 20-year term, and then they're automatically renewed for successive five-year terms. So, you look at it, okay, so if, if they agree to it, they're, they're essentially buying the village for, for decades, and then for termination, I mean, my only concern was, again, I didn't understand what the credits were. And, and then I looked at the termination, and, and the village has, it's a 365-day prior written notice.
It's actually eight. Well, that's if you want to, it's 180 days, you should say.
Well, it says 365. I mean, but.
Oh, cancellation, so that might be if you want to.
But, so the problem, the problem was, if, if they wanted to terminate it, to give a year's written notice, and then there would be the termination penalty, and the concern was, was, I, again, you deal with it all the time, I don't. When I looked at this, I couldn't identify what the penalty was gonna be that the village might face, and so, the concern is, is you got a perpetual agreement, I don't know what the benefit is and how you calculate it. I can't tell you, I understand what the penalty would be, and so, all I said was, was from my standpoint, I, I don't, I'm not in a position where last month I could guide.
Which is understandable, I mean, these are, this is based on, like, I mean, you have, you understand, like, there's different types of lawyers out there. This is more toward energy-type people. And I have this a lot of times where a lot of people look, I don't get it, because I'm not that kind of lawyer. So, basically, yes, it's 180-day outs, not 365. What it is, is typically, they do the 20-year term, so that way, they're not renewing you every single year, every single five years, every 10 years. They wanna make sure that once you're in the program, they don't have to worry about more paperwork, because what'll end up happening is, remember how I told you I could take potentially at least six months' worth of time before you can start getting the credits?
Yep.
If they had to come to you every single year and do that, what'll end up happening is, after a year, they would remove you from the program, take you off the solar array, give your power to somebody else, and then they'd have to come back and say, hey, fill out this piece of paper again until you wanna continue to participate. So, what it does from there is, it creates more havoc that these developers are looking to not do. So, by doing it that way, they remove the idea of having to do paperwork and renew every, you know, other, et cetera, technically in this case, or like seven months, because you get 180-day notice to get out of it, you actually would be in the program for seven months, because you'd give it for the first month, and then you could literally say, hey, here's my written notice for 180 days out, and then six months later, you're removed from it.
And then, so, I mean, it was, it was the duration that was concerned, and then, you know, not being able to calculate the credits, not being able to calculate the penalty. And then, the, the other issue, at least is very generic, was these types of agreements, I've, I've seen them before over the years, and what happens occasionally, not often, I said, occasionally, what happens is, there would be a third party, five years from now, 10 years from now, that would approach the village and say, that third party wants to audit this to make sure the village got the credit that it was entitled to receive.
Okay.
And, and when that third party does it, they take a piece of the action, they make sure you get the credit, and they get a portion. That can't be done here.
I know what you're talking, I know what you're talking.
Yeah, that can't be done here, because what happens if there's a dispute, all of a sudden, the village is bound to this agreement with an arbitration process, and, and they cannot let somebody come in and audit. The problem is, is if five years from now, if the village board were asked, someone like me, are we getting the credits that we're entitled to? I wouldn't, I wouldn't have the expertise to do the guideline.
So, what you're doing is, it's, it's called a subscription program essentially, if you've seen those words in it. Because what they're essentially doing is, for every dollar that's produced off the solar array, the developers get 95%, you get 5% of it. So, what they do is, they look at your kilowatt hours, how much you do per year. From there, they're able to generate and say, let's, let's, like, help with that whole dollar, you know, it's a dollar, a dollar output, no idea. For every dollar you get, or that's generated on your behalf on the solar array, the developers get 95% of it, you get 5% of it. So, I know, like, I know it provides what would be like a savings projection, that savings projection, you base it off of what you typically were paying at that point in time with National Grid, what you used per year and so forth. We try to factor in cost increase of anywhere between 1% to 2% of savings every single year, but we know that, well, we know that National Grid prices going up, well, just went in September, went up again, or it's going up again in May, another May. So, what, I mean, our projections are pretty, your projections for savings are pretty modest on our end, because obviously, we don't wanna estimate too much, only because, like I said, we know that National Grid prices are coming up.
How long is Saratoga been in this?
Uh, they went through the whole process, oh my gosh, I wanna say I started with them in January. So, how long? Well, I went through, I went through the controls, I was there, I never had to deal with any measures over there. Months now?
So, have they already seen months?
I'm not sure, I'd have to ask. I, once it gets to that part in time, our partners don't tell us how much people save. The only time, like, I've been dealing with a lot of people that signed up over the past summer time, that have reached out to us, and we reached out to the developers and say, hey, when's your interconnect date? And then what our office does is, they send emails over to the clients and say, hey, this is when you should start saving. So, I couldn't tell you, like I said, I apologize once again. That's beyond what we do, so to tell you what other people are saving, we wouldn't know. That would be something they would directly know.
So, let me ask a very direct question, Scott. Sitting in this village board shoes, and I, I'm speaking for myself, I have a concern that we can't audit this, that this is what it is, and that's where it's at, that, that's a huge concern of mine. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong.
When you say audit, you will be able to look at your National Grid and see the dollar credits?
No, what, what you're telling me is, what, if Mr. Burrows is correct, and I believe he is, if a third party comes in and we have this, and they wanna look at these, you're saying they can't do it?
I'm saying the developers can. I know in other states, we have done it, because in other states, they do what's called dual-bill situation.
Yeah, I don't care.
Well, what it is, is it's the same idea, these, this, New York State is not, the developers that work in New York State are not the only, this is not the state they operate in. So, the developer should be able to provide you with that, and say, hey, here's your lifetime savings so far, because I've seen it in other states. They have that information. You gotta remember, it's the developers that are generating the dollars on your behalf and placing, you know, basically accordingly onto your National Grid. So, they would have that information if you needed to. That would be something more where, you know, we could ask for you, some developers are like, we'll have them give us our call, and we'll answer that for them, because it's more private information. But, basically, what it is, is for every dollar they produce for you, they are gonna give you, they're mandated by these agreements to give you a 5% credit on every dollar they generate for you. So, if they generate $10,000 in one month for you worth of credits, they have, they will show, and you will be able to see that, you saved yourself, what's that, five, or 500 bucks. And you can, I mean, technically, if you look in your National Grid bill, you will see that too, because you'll see, if they generate, I want, let's say, if National Grid will give you $10,000 worth of credits, just one of your bills, you'll see that $10,000 worth of credits, and then you'll see what they call a subscription fee, where they tip back to 9,500, and then you'll see the bottom line on that miscellaneous section saying minus 500 bucks. So, you will see that on each bill every single month, you will say 5%.
So, I guess, I guess that's, that's okay. Is there any way we can see another municipality's bills to see how that shows and works?
Um, yeah, I can give you an example. We do have some people that are cooperative about stuff, I mean, it's not personal information, but it's probably called public information, honestly, so you know that.
So, now, admittedly, here, I'm the weak link in the group, because I, but, but is there a time limit where the village has to act? I mean, could I have an opportunity to look at this again and maybe?
Oh, please.
Maybe reach out directly with Scott to ask questions?
Please.
And then report back to the board? I, I don't wanna hold anybody up on that one, or hold you up either.
I'll actually, what I'll do is, I'll give you my card.
Perfect.
And what I'm gonna do is, send me an email, and what I'm gonna do is, I'll actually have the CEO of our company chime in on it. Which we typically do anyways, emails, you know, obviously. We love getting involved with lawyers, because obviously, these questions are typically lawyer questions. And so, he's well aware of the stuff. Obviously, Solar and Earth has been at this for 10 years, we operate out of 10 different states across the country. So, obviously, he's seen every possible agreement, and he works directly with the developers, so he's the one that they come to when they want stuff.
Well, actually, the, the board's the boss, and they represent everybody in the, in the village, and I just wanna be able to give some advice, but admittedly, I gotta, I gotta get a set of brains on this.
Perfectly fine.
And I'm, I'm just not up to speed on that right now.
At the end of the day, for you guys as the board, and even for residential, it's essentially, if, if a developer came to you, say, I was a developer and I came to you every single month, and I just said, hey, here's 500 bucks, put it towards your National Grid bill, are you gonna tell me no? And I mean, for doing nothing? That's kinda what this essentially is, is they have to, we all know, we live in New York State, okay? Let's be realistic, anything we want, anything we've ever done with Nicetera, you had to have paperwork filed on your behalf, correct? And that's essentially what this is. Stuff has to be filed, has to be tracked, and that's why New York State does what they do. This is why the developers do what they do. They wanna make sure they're tracking it, wanna make sure that things are done. But, that's essentially what it is. On the long end, it is the same thing, is, hey, here's some money, can I put it on your bill, and then go from there?
I'm not questioning whether it's a good program or not.
Oh, no.
I just, I, I, we're stewards of the village's funds.
Correct.
And I, I take that very seriously.
And that's, that's a great point. You are basically paying, you're taking money from the people in the area, from your residencies, and your client develops, and what our company is trying to do with these developers is come to you and say, hey, it's a little bit less that you're gonna pay, here's a couple dollars towards that, and that's essentially, so, you said, that's basically what it is, is, hey, we're coming to show you how. Is it really gonna save them, the whole resident, you know, the whole village and all that kind of stuff, is it gonna save you life-changing? No. But, it's going to allow you to take money and maybe move it from one part of the budget to another part.
So, you'll compare with Mr. Burrows?
Yeah.
I would like to take more than one of us.
Well, first of all, what is the life expectancy of a solar panel?
They can go, so, just like a vehicle, what a panel does is it deteriorates over time. So, what typically happens is, I tell people, these can go 20, 30 years, if not more, but what happens over that point in time is they have deteriorated, with 100% efficiency in the beginning, right? And then over the years, they start to become less efficient. And then usually from there, because obviously, programs like this, they'll replace them, even offset and actually resell it. There's a good resale value on a lot of panels. I mean, if you go on any marketplace online, you can actually find panels at a cheaper cost than what it would cost if you bought brand-new. It's the same thing with your, you take a used car, it doesn't just go to the trash. Cars are broken down, resold, doesn't matter if they have 300,000 miles on them or not, there's still valuable parts behind them. So, it's the same thing with these. They can reuse them or resell them. So, it's hard to say directly, most of these panels definitely can last for a very long time, but they do. Like I said, anything else, they deteriorate, but they're less efficient.
Scott, thank you.
I appreciate your time, thank you for having me again. Anybody else have a question, or they feel bad about just walking out and not asking if anybody else has any? No? Alright, thank you for your time again, everyone.
Thank you.
And please reach out, and we'll go from there, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have privilege on the floor. You will address your name and your address, you will be allowed to provide minutes to address the board, it should be a board, not even, remember, and, and when we do it done, and then we'll go from there. Burrows, you're free.
Good afternoon, my name is Carol Liddicker, I live at 7538 Cascade Ave. I've been here quite a few times over the years pertaining to concerns of a violation in, in the village, and it's pertaining at the corner of Cascade and Stowe Street. There's an awful obstacle there. We are, I thought, we are supposed to protect the people here in the village for safety. Now, I don't know if anybody's ever gone for now to the corner of Cascade and Stowe Street, and you have a person, the owner, property owner, who has those hedges, that's an obstacle, and there is a code law pertaining to that. I have been here quite a few times, asking why nothing has been done. If we have laws pertaining to the fence and hedging law, how come we're just letting it slide? If we're gonna do this, then why do we just void the law? I mean, we're trying to think safety. First of all, they said codes, the county's supposed to be taking care of codes here in the village, but I've been up to codes before and passed, and the last time I was there, this is what I was told at Collins, because I had a problem with my neighbor. They told me, they do not want to take care of mediocre things of laws in the village. The more important things they have is for people that are building or reconstructing things. They don't have time to do anything of the codes in the village of law. So why are, another thing is, why are we paying them when they're supposed to follow suit and help out? Yes, they're busy. Now we have to make appointments, because they don't have enough people. All I'm asking is, as a person that lives there, and I have other friends that come here in the village, and they said, that's an awful spot, and that property owner is in violation. Why has nothing been done? Other people in violation, they want stuff done in an uncertain amount of time. If they don't follow suit, they are fine. What is going on? Is there somebody that's, I don't know, the way I feel, somebody getting paid to look the other way? Or are we going to have to wait until something seriously happens? And the board has been, I've told, and I've expressed myself so many times over the last two years, nothing's been done. So until something happens and someone gets killed, because you all are aware of the situation, and I told you all before, that that person, because the person that's coming from Cascade onto Stowe Street trying to make turn, they cannot see, because you're not going, you're going into the flow of traffic. You don't see, you're, the person that's coming off Cascade Ave is going to be liable. So if something happens there, the thing is, in my opinion, and I told my friends and stuff, if anything happens like that, and I told them that, I've approached the board and nothing's been done. The thing is, is that I would tell them to sue the village, because they have been told, and that the landlord, the property owner, will be sued too. So all I'm asking is, do you all care or not? You're going to have to wait until something seriously happens? Heaven forbid. And if you allow that to happen, shame on you all. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. You have in front of you the 10, 15, 25 minutes. If there's any additions, deletions, substitutions. Otherwise, I'll take a motion to accept the 18 minutes from 10, 15 to 25.
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
My second.
All the paper. I oppose. Mr. Trillion, this month's vouchers.
Well, our general fund is $150,279.26. Water fund, $132,356.67. Sewer fund is $50,373 even. We've had a couple pretty good-sized bills this month. Wendy could explain exactly what they are. They're just the same.
New York State retirement bill, we had to pay for next year. That was significant. We have the paving project that was done, that was significant. I think those were the two biggest ones that we had.
Thank you. Yep, great. Been audited, and I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Anybody have any questions on the bills? Motion by Mr. Trillion, second.
I'll second.
Your choice, one of you. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. Unfinished business. I'm going to deflect this to the recreation program, to Gina Judd. We've been working hard on this. So go ahead, Gina.
So, in regards to next year's rec program, we're communicating with Lava Academy. And we need to come up with a specific amount to present to them that we would do. And so, we did meet as a rec committee with the town, and we would like to propose the same amount that we did last year, which was 40,000, and that's split between the town and the village to support a rec program in the summer. So I think I need a motion to approve that.
It's what, 70, 30?
Yes.
Any, any amount would be contingent on this upcoming budget, but I don't, I wouldn't see that as an issue. The problem you run into here is, the school has their budget in September. We have our budget in June, and the town has theirs in January. The town has already approved their budget for the next calendar year. We have not as far as a summer rec program, okay? So, but moving forward, we are going to, it appears that we will be completely out of this. And from there, we're hoping that a amount of something, maybe like what South Louis is running, is going to happen, or something of that sort. The school board apparently has surprised our interest. So, I, I.
And this isn't any different than what we contributed to it last year, except we have more responsibilities, and I'm hoping with them taking the lead, that it will help us focus on what we need to.
I think it's pretty clear that the village can, we're not in the kid business, per se. And fewer and fewer villages are running their rec programs. And in this county, we're just about the only one. South Louis is running theirs, Beaver Falls is running theirs, I can't speak for Harrisville. Adirondack is run theirs, South Jeff is running theirs, and basically, a school-based. When we met a month ago, the county youth bureau was involved also. And, you know, somewhere, we are going to, we're going to come to a conclusion, because we just can't do it anymore. It's beyond the scope of our administration. So I asked the board if they have any issues with the 28,000. Otherwise, I think I'd like to inform the school that we're in for what we were in last year.
So that's going to be a set amount, it's not going to be per kid?
Correct.
Right.
Correct. And we could, and, and there may be more kids in than that 28, and there may be less. But that's what we're pushing that way.
Going forward.
Yep. Yep. So, does anybody have any questions? I think we will form the school a good faith agreement that we are going to, so that in a memo that we receive, a robust.
Just like a letter that I could present to her, so she.
So the town is also on board with this?
Uh huh.
For the rest, the other 12?
They already, they already are, because it's in their budget.
Right.
Yes.
I know there was some discrepancy last year on what they own, what we own, and all that. I just wanted to make sure that.
This is where, what it is.
Yeah.
This is kind of what we paint this year. So, all right, I guess if there's nothing, Gina, please move forward, and thank you. Gina's worked very hard on this.
Mayor, can I ask, I have that check from the bureau in his day. I need you to tell me what to do with that.
That's $5,000?
$5,400.
Well, I will discuss that with you in the morning.
Okay.
The DRI. I talked with Jen Boss this week from the state. And we will be getting a contract from the state in the coming weeks, in the coming months, at which point, she has provided, and I've given it to the board, a copy of it, boilerplates for the RFPs. Once, once that happens, we can put it out for, for it to be administered. The monies of the administration come out of that grant, it's already built in. It won't cost us anything. And that, based on the scope of the RFPs that Paul's got, and I, maybe he hasn't had a chance to look at them yet, I gave them to him, because he's, that's kind of his follow-up, and we can go from there. So I had a nice conversation with Jen Boss, and feel that we're going to be moving. We can see that contract from the state before Christmas, but she said it's imminent. I, I get the point, so, okay. Dog control. Gina attended the meeting last month, the supervisors' meeting, because I had to be out of town. So there's a lot going on there between what's going on with the animal shelter, dog control, and it's, it's going to, I guess, become more and more of a, of an enforcement issue, an addressing issue, and what's going to happen if there's a loose dog. There's, there's a whole lot there. Go ahead, Gina.
Yeah, so, all of the townships came together to meet with Lewis County Humane Society, because she's changing the contract. Then Meryl was there, representing and answering questions. So the contract's going to be an annual contract. It will be through the town, and again, will help split the expenses. They're still working on that. But just for your information, there's 483 licensed dogs between the village and the town, and the village has 349 of those dogs. So we are still working on the cost and how that's going to be split. Just wanted to make you aware that it's converting to an annual contract, not a per-dog contract. And then, the town is also working on the dog control officer, and I do believe that we have to, there's in our packet, if we can read over that, and just make ourselves aware of it. I'm not ready to make a decision on this with the town yet, because we don't have figures yet. To my knowledge, this has to have a figure of it, right?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we have to still work with the town on that.
I believe talking to Bob Mullin, we'll talk about it tomorrow.
So we'll have more information, next one.
More to come.
We still do not have a building contract agreement with the town. Mr. Burrows, I don't know if you can, I think, if possible, we need to discuss this with Mr. Mullin and Mr. Meyer. I'm going to try to attend the meeting tomorrow, and maybe talk with Bob and Ray after the meeting, if possible, to see what we can, what we can get on that. We need to go forward on that. Going back, I don't want to, I missed one thing. The rec program, the skating is going to remain the same. And I'd like to applaud the village and the town, because for years, that skating program has been free to anybody. And it will continue, at least for now, to be free to anybody. So if somebody says, you know, why is the, the village is, is trying to be as responsible as we can for, to our taxpayers, but yet, the skating program is open to anybody that wants to be there. And we've got people that are using skating time from Utica. And I learned that the USA Girls hockey team actually came down here a couple years ago.
I don't know, they called Paul.
And practiced.
Probably three or four years ago. Yeah, practiced on their, on their way through from Lake Placid.
And they, they wanted to pay him. We said, there is no fee, and they said, no fee. So, I, you know, you learn something new, and that's, that's pretty, pretty, pretty neat. Okay, new business, parking. I think the parking's doing better. I don't know if they have anything to say on that, okay? You got something?
No.
Okay. Budget amendments. Wendy has provided us with the very, very minimal budget amendments. If anybody has any questions, otherwise, I'll take a motion to approve the two amendments that Wendy has asked for. Mr. Trillion?
Second.
Mr. Weddrip, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Lava Fire Department has two new members. Derek and Ben Bergey, that we need to approve tonight. I'll make the motion for the approval of both of those new members.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Wendy has the list of the certification of the unpaid taxes that you've all got. I'll take a motion to certify those.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I also need, you've got all of you guys to sign.
Right. Motion is carried. Craft sewer surcharge?
That was not brought up in front of the municipal board, because we got it after. So it's coming straight to you.
Okay. Motion?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. On the agenda of the new business is bicycle law. I, I know moving forward, we're probably going to have to have something, because they're riding sidewalks and, so. Mr. Burrows, probably, we, we can get maybe a boilerplate from another community or.
I just received it just now.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody's got a copy. Basically, everybody's got a copy. There's actually a resolution attached to it, too.
We can review this.
Something we need to review, basically. You don't have to activate right now.
No.
Okay.
No.
That's from Megan.
Yeah, Megan Krokowski actually found it somewhere.
Traffic coordination? She's on the, is she on the traffic board for the county or?
Playing, right. Yeah, I don't think.
Her husband's on the, on the coalition board.
Yeah, he's on the same board.
So you read this over?
Yep. Yeah, I mean, they're a whole different community. He thinks, he likes it, I like it.
Okay. Because that's going to put a lot of responsibility.
There was one question, something on there about the DOT laws, right?
She, and she edited it, it's in here now, yeah. So before, we just, she just did the sidewalk law, and then we had her incorporate the street, so. And she did a really good job.
Moving forward to officer and committee reports.
Congresswoman.
Congresswoman.
Congresswoman. You have a Ray Catruss letter?
We also have him back here, too, but I don't know if he wants to say anything. Not on there. Not on there, because he may want to speak.
Well, we'll get to you. So we have a letter from Mr. Eric Verkla on the turkey trot. I, I guess we approve that. Motion to, for double play. Daryl, do you have any issues with that?
Nope, we do it every year. He's not willing to.
Okay. Motion to, let's just have a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion, we approve that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, because I don't have to run that page.
You can walk, Tony.
Yeah, you got Mickey here, too.
Yeah, that's great.
I forgot.
I forgot my.
I'll be the guy in the corner handling out coffee.
I'm going to help you. Mickey's down here in liaison, I'll get to him then. It's just that we had the newsletter. Unless he's in a big hurry. All right. Moving to officer committee reports. Village attorney.
Nothing to report.
We, there's been an agreement made with the Rose family concerning running a home-based business in their house. And they have signed up, they're going to follow the rules. They're signed by Mike Young, counsel for the defendant. The Rose, the defendant, and our village attorney, Captain Herring.
Yeah, in my office, Captain Herring, who represents the village, in a nutshell, again, the village board's looking for compliance. The defendant has agreed to comply, to honor the, the, the village's zoning laws, has provided written assurances under oath, that they, that they've identified the new address for the business, that they will follow the rules. If they do that, and they've got 30 days to do that. And when they do that, there'll be a reinspection and confirming compliance. If, if they're not in compliance, then the charges can be revived, and additional charges can be brought. But the real key here is, is that the defendant is, is acknowledging that they will comply with the village zoning, giving the address and specifics with it, under oath. The judge has now so ordered that agreement. But that's a good thing as far as compliance is concerned.
Myself, briefly, Mr., Senator Schumer was in town on Monday, and I got to talk with him briefly. He asked about craft, and from what I know, everything's going fine at craft, and so he's set to keep him in the loop. And that's pretty much the conversation I had with you. Clerk Treasurer?
The Treasurer's report is in your packet. Okay, so we had interviews for the deputy clerk treasurer position, Tim, Chuck, and myself. We did pick a young lady, Adrienne, Adriana Oliver. She has accepted the position, and she will be starting to be someone first. I need a motion to appoint her, if you could.
You interview her first.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Chief?
I don't have much. Monthly reports in your bag, and you've been busy. Very.
One of the, one of the things that has happened, and please ask everybody, as we approach the winter season, to keep your cars off the road from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., or whatever our laws. And apparently, we had to issue quite a few tickets over in Hemlock. And they are now parking in the county's DMV parking lot. There's not a whole lot we can do there for them.
We did a friendly warning for them. They asked us, so we printed out a warning, so.
We can't take it over to that parking lot or what have you, so.
But the overnight parking is really good right now. I came through this morning early specifically, and then there was none.
Excellent.
And then, yeah, the village guys are great about calling and texting us, and letting us know, and nip it. First thing, and then we'll have an issue.
Yeah, because you don't want a side toward the power of the power. Because I know how that. Because I know how that works, people aren't gonna believe this, but municipalities don't lose when that happens.
Yeah.
Superintendent to that?
Got a few things, um, like to ask for approval, put some stuff on surplus. Uh, twenty twenty F two fifty, uh, my truck, uh, twenty sixteen F three fifty. Uh, nineteen ninety-seven bucket truck, a skip steer backhoe attachment. And the liner material for room number two.
In motion?
Hold on.
Mr. Terrian?
Eight tires.
Eight tires for?
From the two Dodger angles.
Yeah, that, I'm sorry.
We replaced them.
No. Just gonna, let me write that down. No. Well, like I told you in the past, you know, nowadays, it's, if you can rotate your vehicles out, at least our pickup trucks. We can rotate them out every three years, you know, we're money ahead. What we pay for them on OGS contract, and, you know, you keep them three years, they're all under warranty. You know, when we go to sell them, we basically make, or we make money, or we, either. So it's, you know, it's kind of a no-brainer. Along that line, I've got, uh, the twenty twenty-six Dodge twenty-five hundred pro cab, um, which the superintendent will have, that is in. I'll pick that up tomorrow, and the twenty twenty-six twenty-five hundred regular cab, that'll be the foreman, that's on its way. I'm not sure when, when it'll be here, but should be here soon. Um, we are still doing leaf pickup, um, it's kind of an extended season for us. Uh, we will continue to do it, uh, until we get too much snow to do it. Um, as you can tell, we've been working pretty hard, we've got, uh, most of the Christmas lights up, and, I think that was it.
Nothing for capital personnel, do we have anything? I still make the motion to put the stuff on. Motion by Charlie?
I'll second.
All in?
Aye.
All right, closed. Motion, or carried to put those on, the auction. Personnel?
No. Already gone over there.
Okay. Anything? Joe Austin?
Um, I don't know about you, but anything, I, we did get our new truck, it's in service, and we see a much smaller fire truck, that's our new truck, so.
And Ross bought you?
Yes, Ross bought one of our trucks, and.
He's now gonna fight his own fires if they stop.
A pig, a pig farmer down in New York City bought the other one, so.
Joe, you say a smaller truck, is that like, like the brush truck, or?
It's an F five fifty is what it is, it's on an F five fifty chassis, so. So it's half the size of our other trucks.
Did you?
It's not half the cost though, so.
What did the other truck go for? The one that went out state?
Uh, between both trucks, we got eighteen thousand, so I don't remember which one we got with.
That's, that's not bad.
So.
It's scary though, what you pay for and what you get for, but I don't, I know you got eighty-one hundred for the pumper.
Yeah, so it was just over ten thousand for the other one, or?
I did have one other thing, I see, I see Carrie Tyler here, I just wanted to inform her of that. Um, I met with the contractor for the sidewalk that you're talking about. Um, it's not gonna happen this winter, but it's gonna happen first thing in the spring. What we've decided to do, instead of, I think I was telling you, we're gonna pour a concrete wall there. What, what we came up with a plan is we're gonna pull the sidewalk out, and we're actually gonna hit the Burkler block.
Yep.
And build, so we'll build a wall there, and then we'll do a, a rod on there and fence, or railing all the way up there, so it's kind of a code. So it is to code, but it actually kind of looks nice.
That's what I call it, just, yeah, across the road from the house.
Yeah, we'll save that.
Town board, the ZDA, anything? Uh, no. Municipal board?
No, neither.
Town? Town?
Uh, not much at the regular meeting, but there was a presentation at the committee meetings on Tuesday on, uh, the new trail. Their acquisition of the trail property, the railroad properties. And basically, Jackie Mahoney gave the presentation. Uh, it's gonna take, according to her, a year or better, they're gonna go through a whole survey thing and public outreach and all that. Uh, which all of these paddles and property owners will be involved in, and that's where they're going from there. And that's the outlook now. And also, there was a presentation on short-term rentals, uh, which we need to get something in our law. Our zoning law regarding short-term rentals. I think on our end, because the county is gonna opt into the state program. But on our end, I think as a village, most municipalities, village municipalities that you see throughout the state are going to limit the number of them. So we're gonna probably have a number limit on how many can be in the village at one time, basically. So say it's twenty-five, okay? And then there may be a waiting list. There's a reason for that, so it doesn't basically overcrowd the village, basically. Cause everybody in the village could turn their place into a short-term rental, is what I'm saying. So if you limit the amount, it's actually better for the village. But we do need to get something in our zoning law, but, you know, some wording of some kind. The, the code enforcement officers will actually be, uh, inspecting them now, as of, I think, next June, when this all comes into effect. So, I will work on some of that, keep, what are you calling?
Recreation, I think we've already.
Gina might wanna help you with that, maybe?
Yeah, I, I would be, I would be interested in being involved, that's interesting.
I'm just offering that, you know?
Yeah.
Neighbors helping neighbors.
Um, recreation, I think we, we talked enough about recreation, does anybody have anything more to add on to say about recreation? Uh, skating I think is probably gonna start anytime soon, right after probably Thanksgiving. Um, Mickey, you're up.
So, I'm actually gonna have a board meeting, January twenty-second, so we have six o'clock. We have downtown Alwels, I believe that location's gonna change, um, uh, six o'clock. And, uh, Paul Smith, who is our chair now, will not be chair come January, so we'll, we'll be looking for new officers. So, um, and I have to still check with Yvonne Oliver if she's gonna be continuing or not as vice chair, but, um. So, I think what we're gonna do, we talked about maybe moving that meeting anyways, because we want everybody to get around in a circle, so we need a bigger room. So we're talking about moving it anyways, so. So, so does that mean you, you're gonna put your name on to be chair?
No, I'll make an attempt to attend, but I don't wanna be chair.
Yeah, so, we got that going on, and then, um, again, we're, we're moving forward, uh, not losing some of the funding, come enough to try to fill out some representation's gonna be, but. Right now, that's on March nineteenth, they'll be at the Howard G. Sacant Technical Center. And we do have, the both county managers in Pennsylvania, um, for that, as well as we're trying to line up, uh, somebody from Craft. Gonna speak about the expansion, potential expansion project over there. Um, gonna maybe have a little bit of an egg focus to part of it in the beginning, and then, we'll probably even have a strategic planning thing for Rayco as part of that economic vision, so I'm also, we'll have other people there. But I'll get to that. The second, um, Rayco student, uh, well, activity and outreach stuff. Uh, so the Rayco youth committee did meet, uh, went through some different things that we've seen on the surveys, what we heard back from the youth. That was done like last year, even from the civic service student activity program we held, we got some input from them. So one of the things was, what youth were saying is that they would like something for them to do, where they can get together with their friends, and go hang out. Actually, some of them even said, quite a few actually in the surveys, said they'd like to see a community center. Um, but, uh, so what we're trying to do is try to connect, so what we heard is they wanted something like art sea. But it's just reading, or doing painting, or drawing, or things like that, that they can get together with their friends, kinda hang out in a leisure way. So we actually, um, took that and we reached out to, um, Kelly Martin, she's with the Tugel Artist Network. And so they're gonna, she's looking at pulling something together for the youth to try it out and see what happened. I think the first one would probably be over here at the Lawville Library, um, probably sometime in December, like before the holiday season, so. Kids wanna do painting and give it as a gift, they can do that, but this is more for like high school age, um, youth. Uh, so the, um, so we're actually working on that, I believe we have kind of a tentative date, December eighteenth, for that first youth thing there. Out of that, the Rayco youth committee also then was looking into things related more to Rayco, and one of the things they talked about is, um, having a, like, welcome packet for new residents within the Rayco region, so if communities don't have one, they could actually use like a template, um, for one that's already built for the whole Rayco region. Um, so we're gonna be looking into that too, and having to even try to develop that, I know some communities have them, some don't, but we're. And we're trying to figure out if it's gonna be both hard copy and like online, or what that's gonna look like, um, moving forward. And then, we had the civic service student activity program, that was on October twenty-third, we did have eleven students, so we had four Lawville students. Six Kopeg and one South Louis student that participated in that. Joe was actually one of our mentors, uh, at that program. And, uh, we will be having our field trip for those youth on May twenty-first, where we'll be somewhere around here in the Lawville area, checking out, um, some different organizations like we did last year as part of that field trip for them. And then, strategic plan, we're talking about doing the strategic plan for Rayco, I talked to our office, we're originally gonna apply for a grant finding, but the Tugel Commission said that, we would provide the resources to help move that forward right now if we wanted to, for Rayco, because Rayco has grown from four communities, I mean, five communities when I came on. We have fourteen now, Village Black River now wants me to come talk to their meeting about maybe joining, so it'll be maybe fifteen, so. What we wanna know is, what does Rayco wanna accomplish the next three to five years, and try to get a better idea of what they'd like to see happen there, so we're gonna, uh, bring that up at the Rayco board meeting, uh, that'll be grown up then. And then, uh, other than that, I pretty much, I mentioned dog control and all that stuff, so that's been going on.
I don't believe we have anything for executive session?
Yes.
We do.
You want to request for contract?
Yeah.
You do have, you do have, so we need, still need stuff.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Matt, go ahead. Save the best for later.
It's quick. Yeah, it's quick, the groundwater wells, we are scheduled to start test, test wells on the first weekend in summer, but. We got our screens, or the screens are, are arriving, and they're gonna be on site first weekend in summer. Paul will agree to help if there's a snow removal issue. Once we get the rig in there, that's the only, that's the only issue we would have, is getting it in there once that happens. It's going underground, so there's no impacts.
We'll get it out in the spring, it'll be fine.
Yeah.
You know, I, I had a farmer that's on village water, that needed village water, and for about fifty-sixty to ninety days this summer. He was drawing ten thousand gallons a day. He didn't have pollen, but he's on, on the system. So, our, our water system is well positioned now, moving to, in the future, and it's gonna be an extremely valuable asset. We can, the issue for craft with water is not gonna be an issue. When we had the issue four years ago, it wasn't, it wasn't that we didn't have the water. When that system was put in in the nineties, and I've said this before, our, our, we thought the car would go a hundred and fifty miles an hour, to put it in layman's terms. We never needed it to, until Craft was using quite a bit of water, and it wouldn't do that. So we brought in the poly unit. We don't even need that anymore, we're, we're gonna try and solve it, that's.
Yeah, your source is way more than you need, or anybody, you have more going over the dam than you have going into your plant. So, the source itself, and now we're adding groundwater, which is easier to handle for you to treat. The, the source, the aquifer is, is, um, I'm sure it's limited, but not, not by our, you know, not by our scale, and, um, and you're, you're just adding to it, you're just strengthening this with this groundwater project, so.
Plus, plus the town, the town of Lawville's going to a water expansion too.
Right. I think the area, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're pumping out about one million gallons a day total with everything, uh, maybe not quite that much right now, just practice down.
And you're able to four hundred thousand of that out of the ground, so it's very easy for you to treat, much easier than it was with the older systems. The surface water, you have to treat it differently than the groundwater, so the groundwater, expanding the groundwater is, long-term is gonna save you all them costs.
Yeah, we said for the chemicals, does that kill every, price line every month? We've had issues already this fall with, um, muskrats and heavers and young's pond and, it's, it's. It'll be great to.
Can we get a new suspension?
I gotta take a break. But, once we get the wells all developed, and I don't, I don't foresee the poly unit leaving anytime soon. Um, it's a great unit to have as a backup, but in, in the long term, yes.
Does it, I don't know what we get for, but I think we spent about a million bucks when we brought it in.
Yes.
And that was, that was a huge commitment to the community, but it was, it was very important.
It's all, it's all last year, that's what you expect to see.
Yeah, so, all right, we're gonna move, uh, move to adjourn the meeting.
Hey, we can get a copy of Paul's.
It, it came, I apologize, it'll be in what was sent to you? Paul's, Paul, yes, that, that's gonna be in the enclosure. A matter of fact, maybe Wendy, if you could grab that on the way out, you can give them a copy of that today, right? Paul's, Paul's, I didn't give them Paul's copy.
Oh, no, I, yeah, I just get it out.
Thank you. Uh, motion to adjourn and go to executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried.